Welcome to the Garfield High City School District Special Board Meeting. Today is Monday, March fourteenth. I call tonight's meeting to order. Our first item on our agenda this evening is to appoint the treasurer. Have a motion to appoint Milette King as treasurer.
So that president, he's supposed to walk off first and then my CD. Okay.
And it says walk. Yeah.
Yeah, he should approach that first. Okay.
That was moved by Mr. Dube. Second, please. And that was second by Ms. Thomas. Can I have walk call, please? Mr. Dube?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas, yes. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
And Ms. Morrison? Morrison, I think. Well, for. This team is appointed treasurer for purposes of the night's meeting. Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda, please? Ms. King, that was moved by Mr. Dube. The second by Ms. Thomas, go all call, please. Ms. Dube?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas? Ms. Daniels? Yes. And Ms. King? Yes. Thank you, Ms. King. The first item on our agenda this evening is our presentations. And the first presentation that we're going to have this evening is Michael Corin, Mr. Hanky.
Yes, thanks, President Daniels. Um, Frank O., uh, yeah, uh, is, you know, joining us again as our. Uh, and he has put together a presentation, so the board updated our instructional data. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanky. Uh, good evening, uh, board members. Uh, thank you for, thank you for the opportunity to share with you. I'll be right behind you while I'll hand up.
Thank you.
Whichever you like. Uh, so I wanted to share with you an update on our, on our math data. My, our math benchmarking. January, this month of January. Uh, and then as that came to a close, we were provided with a benchmark, make, make here where students are in relation to our math assessment. Would you mind?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, so some of the things I want to share with you, I'll be brief, but I don't want to be, uh, detailed as far as, uh, some of the findings and key metrics that we are using. Uh, both the district building and then teacher level as well. So look at some of those key findings. Uh, I also just wanted to briefly describe to you some of the natural that we're using and how those are being used. Uh, both the building and the classroom level. And of course, I'll end with some of the next steps that we are both in process, uh, using and developing. Uh, for the remainder of this year and then of course planning for next year as well. So the next slide you'll see, uh, you have, there's two charts that look very similar to each other. The first one is reading. The second one is math or math. Those are the two areas that we, uh, test, uh, when it comes to math data. Now, this is a big jumble of numbers, but I want to apply a little bit of explanation as far as how this is organized. When students take a math assessment, their, their performance is compared to national norms. There's a norm, uh, sample size of the printed out of the student nationwide. And students that take the assessment in Garfield Lake City Schools are compared to a national norm. They kind of see where should students be, uh, about this time of year. Uh, so here you can see students that really fall really into one of five categories. Uh, low, low average, average, high average, and high. Uh, and that's really based on their percent time. So the bottom twenty percent, the next highest percentage, all the way on up. And we can see what percentage of our students fall within those different, those different categories. But for example, you'll see kindergarten fall on the reading. We're in the low and the fall. That number has risen to twenty seven percent in the winter. So we have more students in that low category in winter than this fall. Uh, one thing to note is that there is a typical pattern with math assessment. That performance has a tendency to dip in the one two frame. That's a phenomenon that's known, uh, in the math assessment. Nevertheless, that's not something that we're content with. It's something that we are, uh, using some of the tools we'll share with you later to address those, those issues. Uh, as that pattern takes some of that with reading and with math. You'll see the same with math, uh, very similar pattern exists here as well. Larger quantity of students below low average category than put. And that's a pattern that's well established within the math data, uh, and something that we are, uh, you know, address. For the next metric I want to show you, I wanted to provide just a little bit of an explanation as far as what this report will show you. Uh, it is the student growth summary report. Uh, it shows a school summary. Uh, I compiled our three elementary schools one, so we can just look at it at a district level. Uh, and it shows where students are with respect to growth projections. So here we have reading. The blue bar represents the average growth for students all in winter. Uh, so you can see that, and this is the first slide is reading, the next one is math. You'll see that all of our students from, uh, in, in our tested areas, anywhere from kindergarten all the way through tenth grade have grown. Uh, they did not repeat their projections, uh, for growth and I'll have a quick comment on that here in a couple of minutes. As far as some of the national trends with respect to impact COVID risk gap, uh, on those growth projects. Uh, but it is, uh, the, it is evident that students are in fact growing, uh, and making progress. Uh, uh, over the course of the school year, uh, at least between fall and winter. Uh, but still fell shy of our, of the projections that grow, uh, the average or typical, uh, students of similar age groups. In the norm sample. Next slide, please. Here's similar for math. You'll notice there are no growth projections for algebra and geometry. That seems to be because we used a different assessment, uh, for this year than we did last year. And so because of the switch, the, the, the math test we use, there are no projections this time that there will be. This is from the, uh, NWEA, which is the company that publishes and, uh, researches the math assessment. Uh, and this is from their research document that this is some, there's a phenomenon that's been, uh, sort of identified between fall twenty nineteen and fall twenty twenty one. Where nationwide, there has been an overall dip in the, uh, student growth with respect to what their projections are. One of the interesting phenomena that we've, where that we've seen and we got to adjust for is that map of the norms based assessment. So while it's aligned to our standards, when we say students grew or they didn't grow, we're comparing them to a norm group. All that norm, that, all that norming process happened all pre-COVID. So what we're, what we're doing is we're comparing students post-COVID, or I guess in the twilight of COVID, where we are now. With where we were, with where students were growing typically. And so nationwide, there's been an overall dip in the performance as compared to that three color sample. So that does explain some of that, uh, growth, uh, the lack of growth that we, that we were projecting early. Nevertheless, that's not something we're satisfied with. To address, uh, some of that. Next. So what I'm going to show you next is, uh, some of the tools that we're using. Uh, the one tool is called the achievement status and growth summary. Uh, and you get real education charging heavy here, uh, if you want to, uh, even, uh, uh, very simple so that way we can look at the, the tools together. So this tool is a, this is just a snapshot. This is actually fairly in-depth. There's, you know, if the full report has students' names and details and data, but the purpose is obviously for this presentation, I didn't include those things. But this is a tool that I shared with our district leadership team, uh, and has been talked about in our building leadership meetings as well. And, uh, will be shared with our TDCs. This, each dot on this report represents a student. Where that student falls, or what, which quadrant that student falls in, says something a little bit different about that student. For example, a student in the green would be a student that is higher achieving and high growth. A student in the orange or, or tangerine or whatever color that happens to be. Uh, those are students that maybe aren't achieving as high, but they are, they are growing. Uh, they're growing, uh, uh, very well. In the yellow category, uh, these are students that are higher achieving, but not growing as well. The paint, they're that same color. Uh, we have students that are, that are lower achieving and not growing. So what we can do with a report like this is we can identify the who. Notice that, and this is, this is an actual report from one of our teachers. Um, you'll see that students have a tendency to kind of cluster, those dots will cluster. It'll help us to identify what students have similar needs and similar achievement patterns. So that way we can address them instructurally with flexible grouping for other types of instructional categories. So this helps us identify the who. Then we can use another tool in math. These are all fictional names. This is another tool that will help us identify not only the, the, the who, but also which areas of instruction those students need working. Then we use this tool to actually identify actual standard applying to our high school standards. To help teachers stay, okay, I know what students, how they're performing. I know what their growth is like. I can now identify what areas those students might need support with instructurally to help them grow. If you have two students that have similar performances, it may take different instructional strategies to support two different students, even though score wise. For one student may need help with main idea, another student may need help with theme or setting. Um, so we look at tools such as the learning continuum to help us know what students need supporting in what area. Um, and then the rest of the teaching learning department, uh, does yeoman's work and helping teachers identify strategies. Uh, as well as, uh, other important instructional things in the classroom to support students with the how. So we cover the who, we cover the what, we cover the how. We work with you. And that's what we're going to be all. Uh, finally, we look at the student profile. So we don't treat all students the same, of course. Um, students sit in a classroom together. Uh, we call that tier one instruction. We're providing solid instruction for the group. Uh, we also have tier two and tier three levels of instruction where students need some more intensive, uh, support. Uh, maybe small group or maybe one-on-one instruction. So math provides us with a student profile. Uh, I, I've eliminated the student's name, of course, but this is an actual student profile, uh, for a student. And will show, uh, a, a wide variety of information, including, uh, the student's growth and achievement, where they fall in that area. But also what areas may be areas that students need. So the example in your pack, you'll notice there's a student, this particular one may need support in geometry. Click on that geometry, it opens up a menu and shows a bunch of different standards that students can benefit from. Uh, I've left all those details out of state of gravity, but there's a lot of depth to this tool. This also provides, uh, a sample pathway. For example, this particular student's testing history, uh, where has the student performed, uh, over the course of time? It also provides, you'll see this little dotted line, uh, like a filled in circle there, uh, is a projection of where that student is projected to perform, uh, in the future. Uh, those colored bands you see, um, in front of you, uh, those are performance bands on the RST. We basically say this student is subjected in this case to perform at a proficient level, uh, which of course are our goal. So what are our next steps? So, um, first and foremost, we are doing, uh, a, a significant amount of work, um, in teacher and administrative professional development needs. Uh, one of those, uh, settings have to be our district leadership meetings. We spend, um, two to three hours, uh, a month meeting as a district leadership team to talk about the language of growth, the language of data. And how these things can be meaningfully put together to support teachers and support students. Then we also spend time, uh, planning, writing, executing, and reviewing our DLC, our building leadership team, and eventually the teachers. To make sure that we have clear communication, we're reviewing our prior learning, and we're incorporating this new learning, uh, that we have together. We're looking at math, we're looking at value added, or any other data source that might be relevant. Uh, but this is, there's been a significant amount of, I, I would say, learning, uh, and a ha moment that have been going on this year, uh, with our teachers. Because that is relatively new to the district. Um, it's only what our second or third, thirty year using a tool. And of course, with our remote learning and hybrid learning and all the, the chaos from the COVID, uh, this is a, a good solid year for us to. And that's, that's my piece. And that is my brief presentation. Hope that didn't drop me down too many, you know, if you have any questions.
Um, thank you very much, um, for the presentation. Um, I understand that. We're not preparing apples to apples because of the. But just from my review, overall, what we would want to see is that our low and low average number from fall to winter. We really want to see that number. Well, and our average, average, high average and high, that percentage increase.
That's right.
Of length. And then I'll be expecting. Um, we're expecting our students to perform better in spring. So we expect to see a little bit of an increase and then probably a summer slide in the fall. Typically all the summer. And that is true. Um, and then I. I guess that it's just not the. Hopefully not. Kind of where we wouldn't see another dip. Um. Okay, so that was one question. I also had a question. My other question really was more for the, for the board. And I'm not sure if we've done it on a administrative level, but disaggregated the data to look at the data compared to some of the equity gaps that we have. Um, from, uh, equity. Something. That we. First, that we, that we gave the data and looked at, um, some of the.
I would be happy to put together, um, some of a summary of the document with that information on it, for sure. Um, one of the things that I want to be careful to do, uh, is when, whenever I provide summaries or, or anything that might lead to decision. But make sure that I have multiple data points rather than if you have a single, uh, metric, like for example, the fall testing.
Yeah.
Uh, so now that we have winter under our belts, you know, I can certainly put together a summary. Even things with math and some of our other data sources, is some reports don't make any sense unless you have two benchmarks from the school year. For example, we just talked about intra-year growth, unless you have two data points. So, um, I'd be happy to put together a summary for you, uh, that figures disaggregate that across race, ethnicity, uh, gender, those.
That's all I got. Other questions? Welcome. Actually, I have similar questions as, um, as being as it relates to our, um, faculty board. And what impact, um, those gaps have been had with the data here and just, um. What are we doing as it relates to those? Is there some bulk work is happening to, um, bridge those equity gaps so that we can see growth in the classroom? So I think that, just wanted to kind of get a confirmation that we're kind of doing well at the same time to support, um, our students. Because we know that there is a significant, significant, um, specific equity barriers. And if we don't deal with those, then it's very difficult for us to kind of build a whole child. So I was working on that report, um, that's kind of, I don't know how that looks. That might be one as it relates to equity in the district.
Have to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Corin.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm the margin. For finding leaders, we have a. That's kind of that on behalf of finding leaders. Welcome and thank you for coming this evening.
President Daniels, you're my doctor.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Wagner. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to leave with the board tonight to talk about your most important chore, at least, uh, in the short term. That is the selection of the new superintendent of school. Your team will consist of, I've given you a lot of the two, I'm going to go through that with you. Okay? Your team will consist of, uh, Jack Bennett, who could not be here tonight, so I think he's close with Jack Bennett. And, uh, Bill Wagner, who's joining me tonight, and myself. So you will have three members as part of the team. In addition to the other thirteen members of the finding leaders consultant, diverse group of, um, superintendents and board members and treasurers throughout the state of Ohio. Well, every time we begin a search, all sixteen consultants with finding leaders are, uh, are noted. Everybody across the state of Ohio, like especially outside of Ohio, becomes a part of the process. So let me lead through some of the materials with you. And I'm going to jump around a little bit. You have a page, I think it's, uh, number two. And now that looks like this. This is going to be the general outline of what we are talking about tonight. I sent you some of the, uh, previous materials. Some of it is the same as, uh, today, some of it is not the same. This is the general outline, but I like to get pretty specific. You have in the packet I gave you, and I also sent to, to, um, mail. I assume, um, Mr. Daniels shared that with all board members. Okay. They have a proposal, and the proposal outlines the process a bit, with it more specific to that. Like the proposal items is the first item in your packet. In that proposal, we outlined what we are going to do. So I'm not going to read all of those, I'll just take the two highlights, for example, in the middle of the page. Uh, it's our responsibility to maintain communications with you, with board of education. Let's give you an example of that. For example, we are conducting the Hudson search, like out for new superintendent. And we communicate with the board, uh, via Zoom every other week. Every other Friday, the board president, vice president, administrators join us. We review applicants, we review process. Uh, they ask questions, we answer, we ask questions, they answer. That's one of our really strong points is that we will maintain communication with you. And we'll design that as we take off the search exactly the way you want it. Quick, um, releasing a little problem. You're entering the search, uh, time, uh, a little bit late. So we would have to take all of that into consideration as we search for new superintendent. And also, um, you will have a number of questions to ask, to answer as we begin the process. For example, focus group committee, how much do you want to involve others? Staff members, D E members, uh, others in the board of education. That's something, something to think about. I'll be sharing with you also the brochure. Uh, we have a, a sample that I'm giving you tonight. I think you received that. And all of the other processes that exist within the proposal. Uh. You have a form, um, this form you don't have, I'm going to speak from this. The very first thing we would do is one of the most important things we do, and that's called the checklist. The very last document in your packet is the checklist. Checklist of really important information. Find that. As Garfield City. The checklist is, um, a series of questions that we would ask you that helps us understand. Your desires in terms of searching for. Oh, you will have to, to you about, uh, where to advertise. What kind of, of individual are you looking for? Someone to manage, someone to lead, someone to provide both of those components in your district. Talk about internal candidates, we'll talk about favorite sons. That is, you may know someone that you want us to talk to. Talk about the strengths of your school district, some concerns you may have about the district. And we'll talk about the board of education and, uh, any changes that might be occurring, problems facing the school district. And, um, we'll talk about experience that you want. Um, we'll talk about, um, residency, if that's important in your community. Uh, we'll, we'll share the brochure with you. Most importantly, and I'll touch upon it tonight, just a bit, timeline for the search and a lot of other information you see here. And also, uh, on the last, next to last page, our contractual issues. We'll be asking you about a contract for the new superintendent. So there are all kinds of things to discuss in terms of the contract. And then information we believe is not that bad. This is the first, most important step, uh, in the search process. Where we all get a sense of beginning to develop a profile of your new leader. Beginning to understand the qualities and the characteristics of the person you want to sit in that chair. Really important. Thinking of timeline, I placed in your document. Where you suggested timeline is near the back. I had indicated that we're facing a little bit of problem now. So our search will have to be expedited further. So here's what we are suggesting. This will, this can change any way you want it to change. Once we sit down and begin to talk about what your hopes and dreams and desires are. They can dramatic. But as you can see, I'm not sure when you're going to make this decision. Now hopefully, just, um, immediately after you make the decision, we would. The board, or the board president, or for any of the board, talk about application deadline. Talk about our interview process, your interviewing process. Where do you want to engage other people in the process, other people in your district? Uh, we have to talk about what your first round interviews look like. What are suggested due diligence activities are, what your second round interviews might look like. Uh, what the contract for the new superintendent might look like. That helps us recruit individuals. And then a possible employment date, uh, contractually in Ohio, uh, administrative contracts begin August first. You might, uh, have a desire to someone, for someone to come on board a little bit, a little bit. Have some overlap, uh, or have some, um, someone in the dis, in the district at a certain time. This is what we're talking about in terms of the possible timeline. I'm giving you a bright yellow, a bright. This is the sample one we're posting. Yours would look, we're similar. This is the posting for Fairview Park City Schools last year. And this becomes our advertising document. It becomes the document that we would share throughout the state, actually, that would share throughout the nation with their national network called A12jobs.com. This also would be shared with, shared with prospective candidates. It will be sent to all, uh, the DLCs and the benefits in the state. Being sent to a selective group, uh, superintendents. Getting all kinds of information about you in this. And giving, uh, the search qualification. Kind of person, the profile of the person you want sitting in that seat. And again, the timeline. I think I emailed you. Exactly. Um, a copy of the Hudson proposal. Did I do that? Yeah. This is what, uh, the posting, the brochure would look. Anytime. In terms of advertising, um, advertise in all of it. Um, we have a very close working relationship with BASSA. That's the State Superintendent Association. Utilize OSBA's online process. We hit, we utilize a, a national net, network called Apple Track. A frontline app for track. Do you guys use that? Utilize that, that system as well, which includes a national network, K12jobs.com. Uh, we also advertise in OASBO, um, Ohio Schools Council, and you're a member of the Ohio Schools Council. That is about two hundred school districts. The O, um, E C N network goes to every school district in the state of Ohio, six hundred times. Um, in addition, um, we will advertise at your desire in certain social media names. Uh, not all. We've had some good success with, uh, a couple, and some less. It's, uh, we'll talk to you about that. One of the things we really like to do, if you approve, is to engage other people at the process. Not that they're going to select your superintendent. But if we could have an opportunity to create a series of focus groups. Um, and that could be five focus groups between you. Uh, staff members, certified staff members, classified staff members, community members, um, political leaders in the community. Asking them, asking about helping to develop the profile of qualities and characteristics of the person. That, that, um, serves a couple of purposes. It engages them in the process. They know what's going on. Part of your, um, process. They also, it also helps to build relationships between the board and the community, the board and staff. That's something we will be discussing with you. Once we complete that, we come back to the board with the report. Report about the focus group. In the meantime, if you were to hire us tonight, uh, we would start to advertise this procedure within two days. So the focus groups and everything else that's occurring behind the scenes would be occurring simultaneously advertising. And then our really strong point is recruit, recruit, recruit. Uh, in today's world, we cannot just advertise and hope to be get, um, quality candidate. We must be on the phone, we must be networking. And with our sixteen consultants, um, that's a great networking opportunity. We're constantly on the phone, networking, networking, networking. Then we vet the candidates, we interview, um, typically interview around fifteen. Those persons who have the experience you are, those persons who fit your profile, we will personally interview. And we will recommend to you about six, could be seven, Hudson and seven. They will each, uh, right now, it can be six. Um, and then we share all of the other applicants with you. But you will have a complete list of all applicants who apply of their resumes. And you may say, I really like this person. They didn't, we're not including them, we include them. You have the final say over that. Then the Board of Education turns out first round interviews. Usually it's six people, those could be less than over a two day period. We are there, we set up the interviews. They provide you with questions which you can use, or it's believed you'll add to. But we are an integral part of your team. After the first round interviews, we set aside a time, usually about a week, we suggest you do your own due diligence. We've done some. We feel comfortable reading those six or seven individuals to you. But you have to make the decision. So we suggest that you do some visitations. You go to their communities. Take them out to lunch, if you like them, if they like you. And we suggest you make a number of phone calls. While we give you our suggested due diligence activity. Then we come back to your second round interview. And this is where you will have some decisions to make. Some cases, the board members, I have board members say, we take the responsibility, we are going to interview the final uh, two perhaps out of the six. Uh, some board members stay. From administrators, from a group of, um, representative stakeholders, which could include administrators, even students, uh, community members, P D A, uh, individuals, booster club individuals. And we have a process where we can put together stakeholder interviews that give you input. They don't make decisions. They, they, we like this candidate, we might have some, some concerns about this. And so then, um, the board interviews the final two with some, uh, input if you choose. And at the end of all of that, uh, at about ten thirty or eleven o'clock, the final night. Uh, we are here with you. We provide you again with all the questions that you need from, however you want to do it. Um, we maintain communication with all of the candidates. We inform those who don't make the cut. You don't have to do any of that. We inform those who are going on. We help you identify the components of the contract. Uh, we'll negotiate it if you want us to, or you can do it, or you can have an attorney do it. But we do all of that in advance of the final two, uh, interviews. We experienced some issues where, um, the board has identified a candidate and then started to negotiate the contract. And said to the candidates, we're going to just have a special board meeting in two weeks. Boy, that's what happened. At home, um, remember that person is sometimes gets a nice increase in salary over those two weeks. Uh, you get to modify your contract over the two years. But we try to set it on a simple, but that you get your number one choice candidate. Uh, okay. That's followed by, um, then your job is over. You, you get the contract. Then the real work you get. Um, we give you a, um, a transition plan. It is a outline of a nine month plan uh, that we suggest the board implements along with the new superintendent. Including a uh, a board retreat, which we facilitate as part of the original fee, with no additional fee. And that first, um, board retreat is about roles and responsibilities. About how you best communicate with the individual. That retreat, we would hope to occur in August or early in the school. That is a part of the ongoing, uh, transition plan which we give you. It includes some communication materials. I think they're pretty brief throughout the year. And some other information. Okay, in the packet, I have also included a list of some of our most recent fact, I have, uh, not listed about three searches that are ongoing right now in this uh, document. But it gives you some idea, it also gives you contact information with their founder. These call individuals, check us out. Keep it well. I, I've talked a lot, too much questions.
I have no questions that I have.
Okay.
I have one question. Um, where in the timeline was focusing?
It's all, we're in the process. So let's imagine that you hire us now for a confession. Uh, we immediately begin to advertise. The focus meeting occurred, uh, next week. Or within the two, ten days. We're in the process. We don't get much clearer idea of how we get.
I got one question, I've been have, um, initially part of our district plan. Is, um, you guys have a diverse pool of candidates, um, really looking, you know, we want to have affordable hiring practices. And we want to make sure that we, um, have definitely in a pool of candidates which we have, um, to decide on. And, and just looking for, um, because I'm looking at this list, which is candidates that have that from, you guys, that again, on our data presentation, where we're at. So looking for candidates that have experience with that, um, with urban school districts and some of the issues and barriers that we deal with, um, in particular. So that's, that's one of the things that I wanted to know.
Absolutely. And that's a very, very important. Um, we have a diverse, that, um, and hope that we find these. We maintain constant meetings with the BASSA organization. Matter of fact, through that, we were able to identify the first group of the Hudson Bridge. So yes, I'll use your question. I'll address that and maybe fix it. Um, important to us that your superintendent's, like, needs, you want, your desires, your goals. That taking a quick move, that the board will graduate. And, and that would become an important focus for us. That your new leader is able to continue the growth of that portion of the board. Yes, sir.
With our job of finding a decision as a board, it's hire the best candidate. Regardless of whatever.
Put me a person with no hair. Or very little.
I don't have any answers, Todd. Thank you very much for the presentation, and we appreciate you taking the time out there with us, um, on some things that finding leaders um, in order to support school districts, finding a style of leadership. Um, so we appreciate it. We'll have an opportunity to mention which gives us, that discuss, um, what our next.
We'll serve you. Thank you.
Our next presentation is from the Ohio Board Association.
Thank you very much, folks. Uh, my name is Will Weillich. I got my colleague Rod Cheatham here and our, uh, Director of Board and Management Services from OSBA on the speakerphone, uh, to answer other questions that you might have, uh, for tonight, too. Um, Rod is passing out a copy of our presentation from tonight and a copy of the proposal that, in case you didn't have it, uh, from the email. Uh, so make sure you get all of those before we get started here. Thanks, Rod. I want to say thank you on behalf of OSBA for having us here tonight. As a, a member of our organization, we, we always feel uh, very proud to come present to our own members, uh, something that we offer to all of them. Uh, it's very nice that, that you did that for one. We're proud to represent all seven hundred and eleven districts in the state. Uh, and so it's very nice that, uh, this is an opportunity tonight. The, your challenge as a school board and as one that I did myself is one of the biggest challenges you have is selecting a candidate. Whether it's a treasurer or superintendent, in this case, a superintendent. And so, uh, I envy your position, but I also know your challenge, uh, in doing that myself. And so we hope that we can bring to you a perspective that, uh, comes from a school board member's perspective in particular. We bring the professional search team. There are four of us that do this full time. Uh, Rod and myself, Cheryl and Carrie that's on the phone call right now also. We've done nearly a thousand searches like this. Uh, we have ones going on at the same, at this time right now. Uh, and, uh, what we believe we can bring to you is people with school board experience and people with school experience, they, so. Um, three of our four consultants have been previous school board members. Some of them, like myself and others. And so I think we can bring you a solid relationship, uh, moving forward. And what you might be looking for as a community member, uh, in our education here. As I said, we're your association. Uh, so we're working on behalf of school districts all over the state all the time. Uh, this is one of the functions of OSBA. You may just, we have projects, we have legal services, we have, um, policy services. Your search services is one of the functions of your organization. Let's talk about it here in a, in a moment. That's what I guess we do that. Um, we will work with you to develop a plan that fits Garfield High School. Uh, we'll, we'll work with a fit, a primary profile that you're looking for, but a timeline that you're looking for and the steps that you're looking for. What I'm going to talk about is how we typically do it and how we do it with most districts. But it's not a rule. We have a customized program that we do for each individual district. Keeping that in mind, we are flexible. We have some customized processes as we talked about. We'll share some of those specific ones here in just a moment. But our goal is, again, if you make your key decision, uh, with information that we provide you. And one of the things we will do is we're providing you all of the information for all the candidates, all their applications. You'll have a chance to see all of them. What sets us apart? Couple of things that I talked about earlier. You can customize for any board. Uh, we have full time people doing this. Uh, we have board member experience on the staff working with you. We have lots of other support staff at OSBA that'll be a part of those too. Our communications team, our legal team, our, uh, other places that where we see where board members, uh, need help. So design and development of the brochure, design and development of the questions you might have for your processes. Uh, we'll have our communications team help you with that. Again, we're your organization, and we have folks that do that all the time. We'll talk a little bit in a moment about our national search opportunities with all the other state school boards. We provide your complete interview and evaluation support, working with your candidates, working with the evaluation process, working with the evaluation. I'll share that in just a moment. One of our assessment tools I'll talk about in a moment also. Just trying to give you an outline here where we're going. And finally, we provide a leadership development training at the end also that has a three hour component tour or thereabouts, to split that way. So we work with the information we receive from the assessment tool, information we receive from you, and customize the program, how you can work with your new superintendent, where the, uh, pitfalls might be, where the advantages might be with that candidate for your board. And finally, we make a satisfaction guarantee that if for some reason, which rarely, rarely happens, uh, with us, is that if the final candidate doesn't work out, we'll start the process over. With us is that if the final candidate doesn't work out, we'll start the process over. But that is not something we're looking forward to and either. So what is our process? Our process is fairly simple.
And that we have several steps that we work with you through, but those steps are customized to fit Garfield Heights. Beginning with my name, leadership profile, meeting with you as a board, and administrators, you would like to have a part in process. And figuring out the profile for this district. What is it you want in a new leader? And is it similar skills that you have now? Is it different skills? What is it that you want?
We have some guiding questions in that facilitation process. We also work with you through the timeline that fits your needs. And the brochure development likely have several revisions back and forth with their design. What it is you like to put front and forefront of potential candidates. The brochure might include things like your enrollment date or your testing data or your financial data, but it also might talk about what is it like to have and work in this community? That's something you can provide us as we start writing this profile. What's it like?
Second, we work with some statewide national search. We'll talk about specifically how we can do that. As an advantage with working with school board associations. Between engagement process and ability to go to general homeless life. Work with focus groups and provide you feedback from the community from groups that you're looking for. Just worked on one last week in southwest Ohio. Great groups coming in all afternoon, being one group after another for an hour. So we have all the groups that we were wanting to hear from and what they wanted to share. And then the board has all that information to help identify what might be. The skills that our community is looking for in addition to what you know already as a board member.
We have a objective and professional screening process. We'll talk about this proprietary developed by an OSBA. Actually used by at least 15 other state association search services that use our system. And we have a board centered, board centered candidate evaluation. We'll talk about achiever in a moment. That's designed specifically to identify the skills and behavior skills that a good superintendent would have. And we'll provide that to you, the only one that can provide that to them in Ohio. And finally, we hope you too are important of your new person. So to break that down on a few more steps, I know you keep looking at steps and doing things. But we're trying to figure out the big picture is we're down to this level and we'll go one more level down. So it will take long to get through some of these. Work on the planning meeting, talk about what we want to do to promote your district. What is the specific. Traits that fit a superintendent for here. Get that brochure designed with our design staff and get it out and distribute it to districts or to candidates. In addition, we talked about doing the focus groups. Those are done in construction while the process is going on so that you can get that information and continually add that to the information you already have. By the time we get to a closing date, we should have a sufficient list of candidates for you to look at. We find in general, we're getting about 20 candidates. Can't make that promise, but that's what we're finding. It has an interest in any one particular district and anyone. I think we had 18 going on for the one that we have that we just worked on last week. The initial. We in our staff will do an initial screening, not to select candidates out or eliminate candidates or add candidates. But to make sure they have all their material. Do they have their superintendent list? If they don't, they explain why. They have their reference list. So it's a real checklist of making sure they have what they need. So you get on to the process of reviewing the applications and you can't find somebody's resume or. We'll check that out for you. The system that are we use that our candidates submit their information is called REBELIS, and we'll talk about that one more slide here. Is again a unique one for OSBA, used by 15 other state associations. And we'll turn it around, keep calling it the other way and give you the backdoor approach then to see all the applications, what's the biggest one. You'll see the same processes, the same applications we see, the same forums that those candidates submit. You'll do your reviewing process of all those candidates with us at the end of the meeting. Trying to figure out how many you might want to interview, how many you want to come back with, those that fit your profile, those that might not fit your profile. And we'll work with you in organizing the first round interviews. After that, hopefully you've narrowed it down to some number, one, two, three. Depends on how many you're interviewing, what you feel like are quality candidates. Before we go to the second round, we'll start the reference checking process. What we'll do is provide you a list, maybe up to 10 references that these candidates might provide, or we provided you additional ones that makes sense for this candidate also. And we'll talk you through a process and have a script for you to read, to call the references yourself. We think it's imperative that school board members do that step themselves. We'll divide that work up somehow. You'll all get a chance to make some of those calls. Some of them might be in person, some might be on the phone or soon, but we'll see how the process works when you get to make that call or where it might be. Moving forward. We'll also have those final candidates, take the achiever assessment. We'll talk about that in a moment here. To see if their behavioral skills that they need as a superintendent meet the ones that are benchmark for superintendents. Just like your. Map testing coordinator can talk about student achievement meeting benchmarks. There are similar benchmarks on the behavioral skill coach, those behavior test achiever for superintendents. And you can be able to see, are they in the range? Are they above the range? It's possible candidate is above the benchmark for a superintendent, or they could be below. Doesn't mean they're not a good candidate, but you need to know that information moving forward. Where are their strengths? Where are their weaknesses? Second round of interviews, again, however many those might be for you, we'll conduct that. We'll help you with the final deliberations on which candidates you might want to do, starting with the offer and the contract negotiation. Again, that varies from district to district. If you want to do it yourself, if you want your legal counsel to do it, if you want us to help you. We'll customize that to your situation. You'll hire your new superintendent. They'll begin the transition process and that's when we'll put together the workshop at the end. To help with your communication, look at the achiever test score information and see what skills we need to provide specifically. For your new superintendent compared to what you have already. Two more details and then I'll open it up the questions. Part of our national search opportunity, the National Association of State Superintendent Searchers. There are 35 OSBA equipment, Illinois, other associations. All our search consultants provide special help. We have monthly calls, we have professional meetings. We are continually improving our skills of superintendent searches, working with other superintendent searches around the country, other searchers like us. We get better at the job. So it's a great network of hundreds, actually, of superintendent search consultants and other state boards of education or state board education associations. That process would be exclusive to OSBA in Ohio because we have the access to that. Very experienced network, and this is a way to provide you access to a national search database with very low cost or no additional cost actually to you at all. So this will help you increase your chance for out of state candidates. The achiever profile is another one that's exclusive to OSBA. It's a assessment tool. I have used for business and industry that we have benchmarked for superintendents. And so we get a score and areas of vacation, staffing, how they handle conflict, how do they work with their colleagues. Experience, comfort, and assessment, not about running the educational part of the school industry, it's about the behavioral part about being a superintendent. How do you work with others? Those benchmarks, again, have been set just for superintendents and you'll be able to see how the candidate, the finalist, would fall on those. Skills. And again, that skill, that's the information is valuable for us in that post conference, post professional development. Now we'll know where your candidate is strong and weak. And we prepare that workshop after you hire them. Be a good place for us to address some of those possible lower score. Another thing unique to OSBA is the REBELIS digital search application system. 15 of our other states use this system. And where we will have access to other candidate profiles that we can use that may be interested in your job. If they submitted their application in this system in another state, it's easy for them to click, I want to apply for Garfield Heights. That's what the advantage of that system is to do that. The other advantage is that we just turn on your side of the application process and you see all of your candidates. Just like the other process would be. Last two sections, we talk about community involvement. That's three possible places. One, during the recruitment process, identifying. Focus groups and we may be able to use, help identify what you're looking for. Second, in the selection process, very likely that you may want to have your candidates involved in some kind of community forums as their finalists. And finally, there may be some reason to involve staff and others in after appointment in that professional development opportunity that we'll offer to you.
So our three points. We think you're all listening. I have two more. It's important to use the other candidate. We think it's important for you to be vital in the process with your community. So we will be invited as much transparency and openness as we can. Not have local candidates, you will have student candidates, you have them all. And you get a chance to know. We'll help you through the process. Very, very transparent.
We'll help you through the process of any state statutes you have, whether it be meetings, the open, closed. Executive sessions, etc. We'll also be helping you through the process of communicating the information out. At some point, the candidate's home schools will probably know they're a candidate. That's when your phones will ring. We'll help you through that process of what to do or what not to do maybe. To answer the question from me about this possible candidate that you have. They know they're candidates and they'll be obviously aware that their information is getting out. Last two items real quickly. Our guarantee to get you a candidate. On the first round, nine nights at a time, but if not, we'll finish it up. Second, we are vested in Garfield Heights. You've been a member of our organization for 67 years. One of the longest school district boards that has. And so we think it's imperative for us to do a good job for you because you're one of our members. Let me finish that up and see if there's questions or comments. Myself, Rod, or Cheryl on the phone might be the answer that are. Help you in your process.
I think I have one question.
Yes.
For the end, is that not a specific name, but was it created by psychologists or. Educators who created that particular assessment? Because it's looking at behavior.
Yes.
Behavior, so I'm wondering the background of the individuals or organization that created that.
Yes. Cheryl, can you answer that one?
Sure, I can.
I thought she might because she's very familiar with it.
Thanks. Thanks for having us.
No, there's a mercy call coming in. I'm sorry, Rod. There you go, Cheryl, sorry. You there, Cheryl?
Yeah, are you all there?
Yeah, we're back. Sorry, something happened.
Okay. I was going to say it's been in use about 50 years. It's created by an organization called Personnel Profiles. They're actually a corporate organization and their work has been historically in the corporate environment. They do the leadership development and the achievers taken by executives. UPS is a notable organization that has used the achiever. Worthington Industries is another large organization that uses the achiever. And about 10 years ago, we met with the people at Personnel Profiles because they were interested in our interest. In developing something, an objective leadership assessment for superintendents and for treasurers too, actually. And so we had. A nice group, I think there were 20 of the superintendents that the BASSA, the superintendent's organization flagged for us as being. High achieving superintendents in a variety of different styles and sizes of districts across Ohio and same with treasurers. They all volunteered to take the achiever and then the people at Personnel Profiles normed. The ranges for us in each of the, in each of the assessed areas. So it's a. It's a long, huge and fairly reliable leadership assessment that we purchased rights to for our purposes for OSBA search.
Has it been normed again since the original time 10 years ago?
You know, that's a great question. When Will was talking right now about that, I thought it may be about time for us to do that again. And so I think that's a great question. Great minds think alike. It has not since we originally normed it, had the superintendents take it and created the ranges. But probably would be good, especially post COVID and with instructional technologies the way they are now, it probably would be good to do it again.
Thank you, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
I just think you guys are OSBA and we're a member of OSBA and we know the work that you do locally with two boards. Do you tend to find candidates that are local and Ohio grown, or is your. Your pool diverse as far as geographic?
It's both. The pool of candidates that we're having, the districts we're already doing are available. Obviously, they will probably be interested if they don't, it's like the sublets else. We have the nationals, the NASS network that will help us with state or other state candidates. We also have other places that your district may be interested in. The example is the. Super, the National Superintendent's Association, AFAFAFAFA. And the historical black colleges have gone together to form cohorts of future leaders. There's one on the east coast, one on the west coast. And our access to those folks is a possibility we could use for you as one way. They're building, those two organizations in particular are building a repertoire of new superintendents purposely. To get a diverse pool because we realize that the pool is not as diverse as it is as compared to our students or our teachers population, put that way in particular. So there's a couple of examples that would be, but our pool is very diverse, yeah.
And I was just thinking about geographic.
Oh, yes.
You know, one thing is very important, you know.
It's very likely. I couldn't say it for sure, but many superintendents attend our events just like you as school board members, so they're familiar with us. If you also look at the, on the proposal has a list of our references, you'll see some large districts that have selected Toledo City, Oland Angie Local. There's even some others up this way, but you can see we have a diverse searching process. The small districts that have, you know, less than 2,000 students to those that have, I think our biggest search was 27,000 student population, the Toledo search, so. The answer is yes. Yes, go ahead, Cheryl.
I would just say that it really, it goes to the customization and really depends on the preference of the school that you're. We work with the pool to put for the really sort of the competitive process, pull this day one of the national search. And we work with them to post advertisements or to find outlets to advertise and recruit for the search. In order to generate that national audience. And then, you know, when it came right down to it. The board or the community groups in the, in the school community said. You know, we think we want a superintendent that understands Ohio laws. We think we want a superintendent that really understands Ohio school finance. We'd like somebody that kind of understands our reason here in northeast Ohio, or maybe even has some familiarity with Garfield Heights. And then you end up with somebody that, you know, has had a tremendous amount of experience, you know, maybe 25 or 40 miles down the road. So it really depends on the district, depends on the search. On average, our searches will have one or two national candidates out of every maybe 20 applicants. And sometimes more depending on what the district wants and also the district itself. Urban district, I will tell you, tend to, tend to have a broader reach than rural districts. And so it depends on the search, it depends that the meeting Will was telling you about, the leadership profile development meeting is. Is what is critical to us because it will define the routes that we take to, to find candidates that meet your profile.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? If not, thank you again for the opportunity. Uh, enjoyed seeing some of the district around here. We drove around a little bit while we were waiting, uh, and so hopefully we'll be back and get to see some more.
Thank you again.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Since Dan was asking what has been the best practices superintendent hiring. I got on the board in two thousand and three and Rod Victor was our superintendent at the time. After he retired, uh, Dr. Sternad was appointed by the board. Not any search or anything. And she lasted, I think four or five years maybe. And then we used OSBA for the next search. And we hired Mr. Rob Mike Beck. He lasted here six months. Uh, at that time, when the final two candidates were Mike Beck and Linda Reed. And after, uh, Mike Beck left, board decided instead of going through, uh, another search, Linda Reed was the close being number one, appointed her. Uh, after Linda Reed's left to go to South Euclid, we had, uh, a search, not a search, it was advertised. Uh, Mr. Slukin did all the advertisements and all the organizations that they previously said in the neighborhood news. And our attorney at the time was Sarah Moore. And she, uh, ran through the process. She was basically the voting person. Uh, she developed, uh, a series of ten to twenty questions. Reach candidates to be asked. And the board took, uh, the opportunity to, each member to have, ask the, uh, candidate two questions apiece and then got down to the final two. And actually their final three. Uh, and Mr. Olszewski, uh, had the board's approval to be hired. And after he retired, we went through the same process. And we hired Mr. Hanky. Uh, the next portion is the advertising, every news, a bass, a bass, a last, or whatever. Attorney and board created, uh, questions. Brought in the candidates for preliminary interviews. And I believe the most we had at one time was ten. And they were a ten minute presentation. We narrowed it down to Mr. Olszewski was three candidates. And well, Mr. Hanky, I believe it was two. And the board, like the gentleman there before, we checked the references. Each board member was given certain jobs to do it, contacted the reference. Uh, and we did ask, uh, for the second interview, questions were more detailed in a presentation by the candidates and how they feel about it. Uh, we did ask for input from the treasurer in the final selection. Because yes, it was closely with the superintendent. As far as interviewing the candidates, uh, I found out in the past, it's best to interview in alphabetical order. So there's no, uh, favoritism. And then the second interview was at a random draw. Both candidates were present, we only drew who was gonna go first. Uh, and we asked them for no PowerPoints, just to bring handouts for each one of them. Uh, the other thing to have in consideration is, is this is gonna go, even though say they say it's gonna take time, it goes pretty quick. Uh, we should have a salary range we want, a privilege benefit we want on the superintendent. Uh, and on the second page is just the second interview, few things that I did when I was interviewing the different, uh, board members. With any questions? Free to, free to, if I can answer, if I have my time below.
Um, just out of curiosity, I know that, well, let me ask the question. Outside of Mr. Hanky, because I know Mr. Hanky was already employed, um, at the district, were any of the other superintendents at the time they came, became superintendent, where they previously?
Um, yes, Mr. Olszewski.
Okay, Mr. Olszewski.
And that's one thing I forgot to put in there. The board made a decision that all internal candidates were here. And I forgot to put that in. Maybe I missed it.
Um, when, on the, on the second, excuse me, the second interview where they did the presentations, were the presentations that, uh, they got to choose a topic from the second page?
No, they gave, they gave their presentation. And then we asked questions again. Different questions from the previous.
Was there some, a, a particular topic that they presented on or?
Most of them presented what their vision for the district.
Okay.
And how they were achieving.
And did, um, the board ever obtain feedback that a vote? Organizations talk about obtaining feedback from the community, teachers, students?
No. If I forgot anything, Mr. Hanky. You were in the interview, so Sean, if I forgot anything, please feel free to, but it was about right.
Um, well, there had Ann Linda Reed work here before they were.
Yes.
Before it was the decision as well.
Yeah, Linda was principal at William Foster, I believe. And curriculum director then.
Thank you. Um, Joe, seeing the contracts that both these organizations committed as far as cost, whether they compare to the cost we pay the attorney to support us in the search?
I would say, yeah.
Capital.
The, uh, the presentations that were given. My concern with OSBA is they didn't have too many districts above average. Most of the districts were almost as below or off like Toledo, whereas many of these meetings have I think they have a twenty, twenty-point district. They give the superintendent and the attorney.
That's one thing I did hire.
They did work, they are more expensive. But if you're gonna get a good superintendent, you wanna check all of Oxford. And I felt very, uh, not bad. Third board, uh, board that I worked with in two thousand and three, except for which was in a fall. Me, I thought we made excellence.
Um, and every year, do you guys have outside candidates that apply or just something you're kind of getting on your own?
When Mr. Olszewski was final three, actually two of them, three were outside.
Um.
And when Mr. Hanky, I believe, one of the three.
Thank you. Um, and Joe, thank you so much for, um, giving us that input because it's very important for us to understand, um, our past practices because that helps us support us in the board. Um, like you said, you guys.
Um, I always felt, Michelle, that if a person is qualified and with the district are ready, to me, that he or she's got a heads up. And then outside of coming and, sorry, no, if they're qualified, they're not qualified, no problem.
I think one component for me personally, um, out of, um, all the presentations that I think will be important for us to consider whichever route we go is really being that community, stakeholder voice and involvement. We've already built that relationship with the community. Uh, we started with a strategic plan here, um, allowing that input and that support. And I think, um, this decision is just as important as the creation of a strategic plan. And I believe we need to figure out, make sure that we prioritize, um, that piece in our search. I think that's very important. Um, that piece will help us shape our strategic plan and finding the leader to, um, carry on that vision. It'd be very important to have those stakeholders, um, put in voice, um, in my opinion. Um, we, we speak these presentations tonight and, um, we need to make a decision, um, as it relates to, um, which organization that we, um, would like to go with. I, but I do also want to get the Board of Educational opportunity to check some of the references that they provided, um, and possibly get some more, um, information. Just wanted to know, and just so everybody knows, in this process, there may be some times where we may have to, um, jump into special board meetings, so, awesome decision. Um, so just kind of wanted to get an idea of whether we want to come back to the table to, um, discuss. Or I can make some phone calls to you guys, just in case. Um, for right now, anybody, are we leaning towards one provider versus another? Then we can move forward with possibly, um, submitting our recommendation to Al so he can dispatch this, the only thing to get it on, an agenda proposal. I, I, I want to second the comment that you made around getting input from stakeholders. I think because of timing, I think you do that on that, on the front end and help build a profile as opposed to the back end with the interview, like the second round of interviews. I think getting an input upfront on which, um, they would like to see just public build a profile and making sure we're asking questions that will help, um, ensure that we are, um, taking into consideration what our staff, our KIs, um, our scholars and our community basically is important. So I think that should be on the front end as opposed to the back end if we are a little bit higher.
Let me ask a question. Are you talking about having stakeholders and employees or whatever, uh, telling us what they want in the superintendent? Or actually sitting in, uh, with the candidates? And I think it's two different.
Yes, sitting, not sitting in with the candidate, telling us, well, they would talk.
What their profile on the superintendent.
Yes, they would talk with the.
I can agree with that.
The individuals with, I think they said the class. And I would say as opposed to having it sitting.
I agree.
With the superintendent on the back end. Um, I think when you're on the back end, maybe some. Last round, first or maybe the last round. Then for me, I see, um, some pros and cons with both organizations. Um, as Joe pointed out, OSBA, um, it doesn't seem something that a lot of work done recently, um, up in the northeast Ohio area. Um, however, I do like, um, the achiever assessment, um, because it gives us, as Dr. Corey is telling us, it gives us another, um, piece of data, another data point to take a look at. You know, you're talking with them, you're seeing their resume and now you have this thing going. So I do like that. Um, as we should do, it's indicated, um, the finding leaders has a, they have a larger team, it sounds like. Um, they're assistant consultants. Um, and they have more of a broader resume. So I am, I see pros and cons with both. Um, we just have to look at, there is a price difference and making sure that it can go with, um, some more expensive option that we're getting more than for. And I've made phone calls on several, um, that, not that they provide enough thoroughly, but some districts that I reached out that I know that have, um, conducted some researches and just finding out, you know, who they use and, um, but their experience, um, has been, um, with both organizations. Um, personally, um, finding leaders is, is most definitely a little more exper, um, expensive. But the feedback from them, for them has been, um, more positive on some of the, um, the references that, or our colleagues that I have been able to kind of inquire about the work. And then finding leaders, just so you guys know, um, I had these guys present, everybody presented my recommendations that various board members submitted as an interest in what they, what they wanted to hear. And finding leaders was actually referred by ESC. So I contacted ESC regarding superintendent search. And finding leaders is the organization that responded to my ESC, um, inquiry. So, um, this is the, um, the company that the ESC was a member, um, for usage. So ESC is more localized and central, you know, OSBA is more broader, but ESC is more social, social, um, more, um, intimate in our region. And, um, I kind of, um, think that they kind of more in touch with what, um, a school district in northeast Ohio needs. Um, how are these maybe able to met, to be met a little more intimately than, um, OSBA. So just ask for which guys next, how do we want to proceed? Um, well, we do need to proceed and we don't have a lot of time to, um.
Actually, Michelle, you're gonna realize you have one thing.
No, I'm gonna take your consideration, so please share with us.
Yeah, I mean.
Please walk us through.
The longest one it took was, uh, my first one. It would always be checked on the box if they just, at the end. I personally didn't think they gave the best candidate. And it turned out he only lasted six months, so I guess it was very happy.
Back, back when you had that, um, interview, that search, did you have the opportunity to see the other candidates?
Yeah, we interviewed them all.
Okay.
I mean, what he said was right, you're, you're gonna interview them all. And it just came down to the vote of the board. I agree with Michelle, I would, if I had a choice, I'd like to make the decision, I would do finding. Their local office is right here on the last side.
I, I think we need to make a decision.
Soon, yes.
Soon and, uh, you know, if you're able to get it on, intended the next week or have a special board meeting, special meeting sometime next week.
There's, we have one recording. Frasier meeting.
Yes, if, if Al will be able to get one.
And just have a few agenda. And just have a few agenda.
Yeah, we had a session before the regular.
Yep. So we'll, um, and we may need to just kind of shift some committee meetings. I think you need, right before, um, we maybe can just reschedule some committee meetings or, um, kind of in the testers that I think this is important stuff going on in legislative committee right now, legislative planning, um. Yeah.
President, that's, that's gonna be, that's, that'll happen before the committee. Uh, I think life, that's before, I'm sorry, I'm gonna want to, I just talked about next week.
Yeah. I'm sure we, we need, that, that we need to fight before. Um.
More contact, please, Morrison.
Yes, yes, I will. Well, next item, so just, just, just for the purposes of the minute, and so we're all clear, we're gonna have a work session meeting thirty minutes prior to the regular working on Monday.
The best on break.
Today.
Is it that near?
No, they're not, um, the, um, it was supposed to be principals.
Your next board meeting, I mean, is it, is it a conflict?
It's not a conflict for the board.
Okay.
Um, we'll have, I, I think everyone here. Nobody assess that.
Just wanna make sure. But we'll have a, um, a work session at five thirty P M. At our March. We first order. And we just may require Mr. Smith. May some adjustments, um. Our next element on our agenda is, um, tentative agenda review. And it's for the regular board meeting, um, on the twenty first.
The same as I was gonna be.
Um.
And then hard talk.
Yes. Is there anything you'd like to share, rather than through the, um, agenda, any highlights or anything?
Uh, a couple of things, uh, President Daniels, first of all, we will be adding, um, we did that again, the agenda, uh, House looking on it, we're going to be presenting on, uh, our ongoing, uh, talks and planning, uh, for, uh, the middle school and athletic facility. Uh, we haven't made, um, uh, you know, they are, uh, T D A to, uh, do, uh, assessment and we are looking at options for the potential, um, of some sort of potential financing, bond or some other, uh, method. Trying, trying to, like internally, I mean, attorney told me, but, uh, Al, Al, uh, will certainly have a lot more details on that, uh, with me. Uh, so we're, uh, second item obviously is the district calendar. Um, did have a question, it was actually a great question from Stu that I answered earlier about the C D C C. One of the problems we have is that we have eight districts in the C D C consortium. And the way the process works is our calendar developed. The C D C C requests all of our calendars and tries to match them up and best. It, it, it doesn't usually work out for everyone. Um, and we do understand that it is a burden for our students that, uh, and for other students in other districts depending, uh, on having that over spring, of having a C D C class over spring. Uh, but, um, uh, you know, there, there hasn't been, um, one of the things we, you know, the board could look at in the future, some districts do do, um, two years of calendars. Maybe not. So.
But I guess when we do consider a C D C C calendar, we have to talk about our other students that's in credit, college credit plus, like we always won't be able to coincide our spring breaks and our various breaks with other programs than if our high school students participate. So kind of when I think, you know, when we receive that, um, from a student, I kind of thought about, you know, I'm sure you guys try the best that you can to consider it and I'm, I'm sure C D C C, um, Ms. Thomas, um, tries to, you know, coordinate as best as they can with their calendar, but they do have eight other districts and the past student staff participate in other, um,
Sure.
schools outside of our district that don't always coincide with our spring break. But do we still provide transportation to all the students?
There we do.
Yeah, they're just a little different, more intense program than general population. Is there anything else you want to share or anything else to point?
I just, the, you know, the first reading of equity policy is there, so, um. That's, that's about it.
Other, um, questions relative to the tentative, that's the agenda. All the questions, wants the next, I'm on our agenda. Do you have any updates, you know, board of education training update? President Daniels. Um, I do have a report that I'm going to do, um, it's a little overview when I attended the same, uh, training. Um, same when I attended the board number two O one, uh, workshop on February, March fifth. Um, and we, there wasn't a breakout, um, so y'all attended the same sessions. So we talked about, um, collaborative leader, policy hot topics, social media, media relations. Um, people not. I don't think it's not with client events and transportation. Did you do this?
Well, I did.
What were you talking about?
I did that.
I want to say that, remember when I was like, we, we, some of these are not what we, um,
We were.
As I'm. I was gonna, and that was not even. So we talked about the upper board leadership.
We did.
Um, so this was, um, I think this went to our afternoon. Um, one of the highlights that we learned, we learned about treasurer pro tem. We learned some information about that, that the treasurer pro tem could actually be a board member. That was something that we learned. Also about tabling a motion. Um, tabling a motion means that we want to move it to later on in the meeting as opposed to, um, postponing the motion, so if we want to postpone it to another meeting time, it's postponing the motion. That was something, um, interesting that we learned when we talked about. Um, we also talked about communication counts and making sure that if there's a, uh, issue or concern that we're first to tell it and we tell it wrong, I think that we've been, um, we've done a good job at that, um, in our district with, um, working with our superintendent, Mr. Crooks, and giving, um, information out to the community. Actually telling us what happened. Um, and one thing that we learned and we actually role played was, excuse me, the bridging technique. So if we were approached by, um, media or it's a setup of a meeting that's set up and we're talking to the media, how to bridge. So if they're asking, um, for instance, we heard that a, um, shooting, shooting happened in Maple Heights. Has your district experienced any shooting or fights? Well, you know, that's a very good questions. We learned how to kind of deflect, um, and also we don't have the, the correct information. How many students were right involved in the fight that we saw on the news? That's a very good question. Um, we have taken care of that situation, so we learned these techniques to not lie, but to be able to, um, um, answer the question and make sure that we're keeping the positive of what happened and the solution up front. Um, we also talked about some of the hot topics, um, that are happening and some of the changes that's happening in the leadership and running for governor and some of the other openings and changes that's happening, um, in the, um, to the state. So one, we all know about, um, uh, House Bill fifty one, we talked about House Bill. Um, House Bill one twenty six. And House Bill two ninety, where the, uh, which is the one about, um, that pet. Scholarship program. So those were the ones that are really highlighted in terms of, um, in terms of, of what is significant right now. Um, they also talked about a House Bill eighty two, some of those, the changes to the report card. Um, they talked about, um, O Ts and O Ps and, um, yes, it's with that. With that, I'm going to let this Daniel share some of the highlights that she had from the training. Um, so I attended the same training as, um, Mallett and Panda Ashley. So they did, so, so you understand there was an in person, right? And then they were, they were doing it in Columbus and they were doing it virtually all at the same time, um, last weekend. So, um, you know, I depend on who, um, were, um, presented to, so, um, one, one of the good, um, I say one of the highlights that, um, I enjoyed too with Mallett was the communication. Um, one and just along, not just talking to the media, but in that it showed, showed us where we are really doing a great job with, um, communication, um, based upon some of our colleagues, just even with us having the Zoom setup and publicizing our, um, board meetings, um, and we're doing it ahead of the public because some of our neighboring districts were, is dealing with, where they're not advertising their, broadcasting their board meetings, but they have members of, of their community and or, um, other organizations that's coming in, videotaping during their meetings and kind of creating their own narrative and sharing what they want to share. So, um, us having this outlet, um, to keep the community engaged, um, is beneficial to the board, um, as a whole. Um. Another thing, oh, another big thing that I think we need to consider as a board and something that we need to put on our goal is, and this is not the first meeting, but a board handbook. Um, they talked about, um, us having, um, a board handbook and an onboard checklist, um, and for, um, new board members. And our board handbook will kind of outline, um, some of our, our goals and how we operate, our board meetings and different things of that sort. And that's a gap that we don't have and I've heard in a few meetings. And so that was something that I kind of start that is something that, um, really need to, um, look at and consider. Um, yeah, we get the beginning, um, of developing a board handbook for Barfield Heights, um, Board of Education. Again, the legislative review was, um, really hot and one of the things that our legislative committee is talking about, um, right now is that House Bill three twenty seven, um, that decisive concept bill and, um, oh my goodness, I can't think of her name, she's this lady that always does the legislative reviews. And, you know, is very concerning about the momentum that that bill is having, um, legislatively. And it really encouraged, um, Board of Education to kind of begin to prepare ourselves, um, to, um, testify the things of that sort against House Bill, um, thirty twenty seven. It's just, it's just not good, um, period. Um, talk about the first, the fair school funding plan, how it's still not there. They, the way they've kind of populated, um, and I think those were, I think my biggest thing was, um, my biggest walk away was the, um, board, um, the need of board handbook and along with the other things that, um, that, um, was that indicated, and then we did learn about, um, the treasurer pro tem. And then it's just some things, I guess, Sean, that's one of the things that probably one of the top priorities on, um, Neola because our board policy indicates that a board member is prohibited from being treasurer person and the law changed into twenty nineteen. And so we're not the only district that was kind of behind the ball on that when I called down the OSBA. Um, they said everybody's kind of in a fog with that and don't even understand why they, um, put that into law before they did. So, Ms. Um, Thomas, did you have any highlights?
Um, I'll be very brief, we all kind of covered important things, drastic away from some of that training, but I also needed to, um, OSBA, the urban meeting. Um, and during that meeting, we talked a little bit about, um, Ezra Khan and the changes that happened with that. Um, break, for a member of Warrenville Heights also, talk more about the, um, national organization, um, urban initiatives that he's a part of. Um, and then we also got some updates from, from the, um, from the deeper dive workshop. Um, one thing that I was confused about earlier in our presentation, um, they talked about House Bill fifty one and that's the field that allows boards to meet virtually. Um, they talked about it, um, and they say, you know, board member can't vote and a few others, they, they say, but later in our legislative hot topic, um, conversation, someone asked the question, um, are we able to vote remote? Um, and the answer was yes. So, Mr. Haney, if you can take a look at House Bill fifty one and kind of clarify that, uh, for me, that would be, um, I would appreciate that. Um, then for communication, again, just in accordance with telling the truth, um, so not to encourage, even those bridging statements. Um, and yeah, you guys really did a very dark covering to the top of the day.
If I have one question, one more, that House Bill, um, one, you know, financial literacy, um, colleague that's down relative to that. They presented about the graduation field and they indicated that there was a field that was developed by the board. Or there was a board developed field out of the graduation field, so I wanted to know which one of ours field of, or developed.
We're still working.
Okay, so have we developed ours yet or not?
We're working on it, yeah. That's the local steel. So this binary is a street. We actually are developing off great. That we can meet at that means that. And then they also talked about the financial change and the financial literacy and the training that they have. And then another side note is that Darwin Red now looking to come for New York. Any suggestions about the suicide, I've got some things. Baby and violence, social isolation training, the interaction with law enforcement, all trainings. Or opportunities, I mean, that we're providing for the student. And so my question, when I see that, it reminded me of our M, our M O U with our S R O. So with. All those acronyms, so, um, I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to look at that, um. New component that's coming down, but I wonder if that's the work that our S R O should be doing. Or is wrong with our students already, because those components that they listed in that. Um, align with, um, our, um, M O U, the work in education that our, um, S R O, um, does with our students. Some of it, some of it I think we've done, just by our own partner that, um, provide. Uh, our usual health partner. That works with this house. Um, suicide awareness and prevention, baby, violence, that can be cold down, depending on what angle you're coming at. Social isolation, I think would be more on the way around the health side. But that's, there'd be some risks or something that if. Well, at least the line is some of the stuff we already do in front of you now, um, our providers are coming in. Um, a lot of the work is just trying to figure out, does it have to be a fire or, you know. And how they want us to pan it out. So other than that, that was about, it is some good stuff, learned a lot of stuff, it's probably true too. Um, I appreciate, um, the past people associations prioritizing, um. Professional development as well, so it really gives us more opportunity to strengthen our skill as leaders. Is there any other matters, excuse me?
Another matter. Um, after our presentation from Dan about the education foundation, I reached out to my classmates. Um, class two thousand and ten, and kind of challenged them to raise five hundred dollars, um, so that we could, so get to the. Five thousand dollar, um, match mark, and as of today, I know the money is due tomorrow, as of today. We have three hundred and ninety dollars from the class of two thousand and ten.
Thank you. Um, Leanne, you're on that committee, what is the current work status?
For about seven hundred thirty dollars a way from the five thousand. I know there are a couple of donations that come in, and then he was basically in touch with actually a class named. Kids from nineteen sixty eight class, um, Donna Rashmowicz, who wrote the delivery of. And he's made a large, rather large donation, but I think Dan wanted to share. But where, where we need to be.
Thank you, um, Ms. Thomas, in the class of twenty ten, yes. And all the others that, um, support, um, this education foundation for students. Are there any other comments or any other matters far to the adjournment of tonight's meeting? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? That was moved by Mr. Judy, it's second by you, can you get a call call please? Mr. Judy?
Yes.
This team, yes. Ms. Thomas? Mrs. Daniels, yes. Meeting is adjourned as of eight oh one P M. Our next special board meeting is March twenty first at five thirty P M for work session. And our regular board meeting is Wednesday, March twenty first at six P M, meeting of the.